This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9.
I want to go ahead and get started. This is pre-CIP workshop part two. Three weeks ago, we had a presentation that was, we had two parts to that during the late news of the hour, so we decided to move that out to here. So, the first part of the presentation two weeks ago was mostly geared towards education and background and this perspective, particularly for the new council members. And tonight, we're going to dive a little bit deeper, again, from a process perspective. This is all about asking these very, very high-level questions and perspective. I would frame it as, this is, we're setting the walls, but not setting the furniture within the walls. And so, the process still involves staff reviewing the requests from various departments and actually putting together a recommended CIP. And with that recommendation of a CIP, then there will be work sessions on the specifics of what's actually in the CIP. So this is just very level, very high-level conversations, perspectives, and really, if you don't agree with, again, some of these higher-level, big picture, probably better for you to tell us that now, because we're going into developing a CIP for you with some of these bigger assumptions, and we just want to test those assumptions with you before you keep coming back. Because, you know, if you said, for example, you don't want any borrowing, well, probably good for us to know that right now, because, you know, we've borrowed millions of dollars and we're going to see it free every year. So with that, Jay, after you.
Sounds good, thanks. And so, I'm going to start off with a little bit of follow-up from the last work session. There were some asks for additional information, and then even subsequent to that, there were some asks for some other information. So, I'm going to try to run through that fairly quickly. So, one of the things that we talked about last time was our fund balance policy, and there were some questions about what do our, what are our peer cities, how do our peer cities look? And just as a refresher, our fund balance policy is that we want to have a minimum of 15% of the subsequent year's expenditures with a goal of 20%. So I did check the fund balance, the unassigned fund balance of our peer communities, including Appleton, Deloitte, Fond du Lac, Janesville, La Croix, Oshkosh, Racine, Sheboygan, Wasaw. And the average, this shows a trend from 2011 through 2016, the average in 2016 of those peer communities was 26.6%, and at the end of 2016, Eau Claire was sitting at about 27.05%. So, we're really pretty consistent with our peers. If we look at that in a, in a graph, this green bar represents that 15 to 20%, which is our fund balance policy. Eau Claire is this darker, kind of darker green line that's running through here and running right out here. So, we're in the middle of the road, I would say, of our, of our peer communities. There are a few communities that have more fund balance, and then there are several communities that have less fund balance as a percentage of the subsequent year's expenditures. So I also took a look at a couple of measures of municipal debt, and again, I know these numbers are small, but this is a period 2006 through 2016, same peer communities, and this is measuring debt per capita. Back in 2006, the peer communities had about, averaged about $1,300 per capita, and Eau Claire was at about $977 per capita. Fast forward to 2016, the average of our peer communities is about $1,400 per capita, and Eau Claire is at about $1,700 per capita. So that's, that measure, debt per capita, has kind of gotten reversed a little bit. So if we look at this in graphical form, Eau Claire is this green, darker, darker green line here, so you can see, back in 2006, we were on the lower end, and as we moved through time to 2016, we're towards, towards the upper end. I would say in the upper third of our, of our peer communities in terms of debt per capita. Also took a look at debt as a percentage of the statutory limit. I remember communities in Wisconsin are restricted to debt as 5% of their equalized value of their communities. Back in 2006, the average of our peer communities, they were at about 48% of that maximum amount. Eau Claire was sitting at about 32%. Fast forward to 2016, the average of our peer communities is about 47%, and Eau Claire is sitting at about 45%. So really, in terms of debt as a percentage of the statutory limit, we're really pretty consistent at the present time with our, with our peer communities, but that has increased over the last 10 years. Again, looking at it in graphical form, Eau Claire is the dark green line here. Back in 2006, we were the second lowest amongst our peer communities. As we move through time, Eau Claire is now here. So we're really sitting kind of middle of the road again amongst our peer communities. There are four communities that have, have a lower percentage of the legal limit, and there are five communities that have a higher percentage of that legal limit. So I also wanted to look at debt service as a percent of expenditures. Not going to get into the details, but this is dealing with governmental funds, so this doesn't directly equate to our fund balance policy, but it's, it was the best way for me to draw an apples-to-apples comparison. Back in 2011, our peer communities were at nearly 15%, or debt service represented about 15% of their governmental fund expenditures. 2016, that had increased to nearly 17%. Eau Claire was at 10% in 2011, we're at about 12% in 2016. So again, on the, on the lower end of our, of our peer communities in terms of debt service as a percent of expenditures, but there's an explanation for that. The dark green line here, again, looking at this in graphical way, the dark green line here represents Eau Claire, and as you can see when we get up to 2016, we are towards the lower end of debt as a percent of governmental fund expenditures. But, one of the other questions that I think was asked at the last meeting that I had sent out a separate email in, was, you know, what's the average maturity of our debt? And as you can see, and like I said, I sent it out earlier, the average of our peer communities, their average maturity is 5.5 years, Eau Claire's average maturity is 7.36 years. So it makes sense that our debt service as a percent of our expenditures is lower because we're stretching our debt out over a larger number of years, which drives down that debt service, drives down that debt service, debt service number. So these were all follow-ups from the last, from the last work session to give folks some perspective about our fund balance policies, our debt policies, and how Eau Claire rates, I guess, or compares to our peer communities in this state. Couple other questions that came up since the last work session that were asked that we, I run through at this work session. One of them has to do with levy limits and the referendum to exceed levy limits. The process to do that is, first of all, there has to be a resolution that's adopted by the city council. That resolution has to include the proposed amount of the increase, what the purpose will be for the referendum to exceed levy limits, whether the proposed increase is for the next fiscal year only, or whether it's for an ongoing purpose. In odd-numbered years, you may call a special referendum for the election, or, yeah, for the referendum election. In even-numbered years, it can ask to occur the next succeeding spring primary or election or partisan primary or general election. Well, that's all well and good, except there's, the statute prescribes that there's a very specific form of the question, and that form of that question really requires that you're going to have to do it in the fall of the year. So the form of the question is, under state law, the increase in the levy of the name of the political subdivision for the tax to be imposed for the next fiscal year is limited to blank percent which results in a levy of X number of dollars. Shall the political subdivision be allowed to exceed this limit and increase the levy for the next fiscal year for whatever the purpose is by a total of blank percent which results in a levy of a dollar a month? Well, in order to, we don't, we don't get, we don't find out what our levy limit is, or we can't fill in this blank or this blank until the middle of August. That's when we get our net new construction numbers from the state of Wisconsin. So we don't even get that information until the middle of August, so there's no way that we can do something in the spring of the year, you know, we couldn't do it till the spring of the following year, if you can even do that. But, so you really end up having to do it in the fall of the year. So some of the challenge, challenges, as I just said, you must, you must know the allowable levy increase, which isn't available until August. If you're going to do a special referendum in an odd-numbered year, it's not cheap. It's about $50,000 to do a, to do a special election, to pay all the poll workers, rent the, rent the polling places. So that's estimated at $50,000. General election isn't until November, it's pretty late in the budget process to be approving a referendum in November. And really, it forces the preparation of two budgets, because we adopt a budget at the first meeting in November, and we set the tax levy at the second meeting in November. So it really forces us to walk, basically, have two budgets ready to go, and, and the one, if the referendum's approved, we give you one budget to approve; if the referendum fails, we give you the other budget to approve. So it really does create some challenges in that respect. Also had a question about the wheel tax and what the mechanics of the wheel tax are. Any town, village, or city may adopt an ordinance imposing a flat annual registration fee on autos and trucks of more than 8,000 pounds that are kept in the municipality or county. Buses, motorcycles, mopeds, motorhomes, trucks over 8,000 pounds, farm trucks, antique and collector vehicles are all exempt from the wheel tax. 19 cities and villages in eight counties in the state of Wisconsin currently have the fee. There's no limit on the amount of the fee, but $20 is the most common in the state. Just to give an example, in 2015, Janesville, which is a community very similarly sized to Eau Claire, received about $1 million a year from a, from a $20 wheel tax. I would, my guess is that there are more registered vehicles in Janesville than there are in Eau Claire, just because Eau Claire, with the student population in Eau Claire, not every student has, has a vehicle here, and, and it goes back to where the vehicle is customarily kept, and that may end up being in their home community. The wheel tax must be used for transportation-related purposes only. Some of the challenges, one is determining where vehicles are customarily kept. So if your vehicle is registered, if a student has a vehicle and it's registered back home, the DOT is probably thinking that that vehicle is customarily kept where, you know, where that registration is issued to. They may not have it registered within, within the city of Eau Claire. There's an approximate four-month delay from the time the wheel tax is approved until you start receiving revenue. DOT is working ahead of time sending out registrations, they're, they're working about three months ahead of time, so from the time, in order for, once you start, we pass that wheel tax, you let them know, it's about four months before you start receiving any revenue from that. The statute provides no clear definition of transportation-related purposes. So, in fact, I talked, I just talked to Kurt at the Legal Wisconsin Municipalities about that, and, you know, because I think, you know, one of the questions that I heard from council is, can it, could it be used for transit? I think it can be, but there's no clear definition of that. Most commonly, it's used for road purposes, that's the most common use of it, but could it be used for transit? I think an argument could be made that that's a transportation-related purpose. One of the other things is that the wheel tax is very regressive. You can't exempt first vehicles, it applies to every vehicle. So, so, you know, folks of all income levels, you know, have one, you know, may have one vehicle, they may have two vehicles, and you can't exempt that first one from the tax, like, you know, the state does with sales tax by not applying that to food and not applying that to, you know, medicines and certain other things. You can't do that with the wheel tax to make it less, less regressive.
Jay, can I just, so, this was something that the council looked at in 2000, looking it was bad. And at that time, the proposal, I was one of the folks who was up for it, was for $10 vehicle registration fee. The projection at that point was about $400,000. And so, that's what you're saying, kind of bits with that, for a $20, you know, 10 years later. At the time, the proposal, what we were facing as council was whether to go from two inches, plowing with the snow reaches two inches, climbing with the snow reaches three inches. And that was a big issue at the time, and so the proposal was to cut the spending for that gap, I think it was a couple hundred thousand, and the other half of it roughly was going to mill and overlay it for the roads. And the point there is that you can save quite a lot of money if you're, you know, doing mill and overlaying for your, for your road, you're getting a longer lifetime out of it. So there's actually a long-term benefit of savings, looking at how we have roads. So, at that time, I think it only got three votes by the council, it didn't, it didn't go very far, but it was, it was put out there initially, it was actually the first thing that I worked on as a new council member in my first budget session. But I, but I think the other, you know, positive is that the mechanism for collection of the fee is already in place, and so that is one of the positives of looking at doing something like this, because we're already paying the co-益，they collect the money and then we get it.
And, yeah, and I think DOT has taken 17% off the top, they're 14 or 17% off the top right now. It's increased significantly as more communities have adopted wheel taxes.
They're living for money too.
Yeah.
Who isn't?
So, so I wanted to get through those items real quickly, there are no decision points or anything associated with that, just, I know, folks wanted some more information about those mechanisms, and, you know, if there's interest in exploring them, you know, we can, you let us know, we can take a look at it.
Well, can I, can I just say two things about what we shared? I think every local government is struggling with how are they going to increase their budget? I mean, it's just pervasive. We're not, we're not all that special to that symptom. For me, if we were to explore this, I would really want to have community engagement to be a part of this process, and I would want, more or less, the community saying, we got your back, like, we want you to pursue this. So this isn't something that I would necessarily want to just, let's think about do, like, this is a big commitment for the community, and I think Eau Claire's values are that they would want to be engaged in a huge decision. And I actually think they could come around and have the council back because they could see the value in what they would be getting in exchange for this. The second is a question that I have, as I was thinking about essentially how we apply our fund balance to pay down CIP, you know, our loans and stuff. Is, is there like a set dollar amount in our budget that we say every year for sure we're going to return $400,000, or is there, it's just we return what we can?
We return what we can. I mean, the only thing that I would say is, kind of along the lines of a set amount, is we budget for a contingency every year, and we can't spend the contingency without a three-quarters vote of the city council, so we don't ever plan on spending that contingency. So that's, that number has varied somewhat, but it's around $200,000 that we budget in the contingency. But the rest of the contribution back to fund balance, you know, comes from a combination of over-realizing revenues, being somewhat conservative on the revenue side when we budget, and under-expending, but under-expending the budget is, you know, the majority of what we return to, to fund balance.
And is, is that a typical financing practice, that you return what you can versus saying, we're going to set a $400,000 or whatever it is to pay off the CIP debt?
Well, I, I don't know that there is, is a tip, I mean, I've never heard of a community budgeting to return a certain amount to fund, fund balance. I'm not quite sure how you would, I mean, basically, that would be budgeting, budgeting a large contingency number.
Not necessarily fund balance, but instead of having an unknown dollar amount at the end of the year, can there be a financing practice where we would budget X amount to pay down the debt, not necessarily just using fund balance, but have a known quantity?
Well, you could certainly budget a number to, to use for, for CIP purposes that isn't coming from fund balance. I mean, basically, what we do is we budget a number for CIP projects, and our source of revenue for that is fund balance. You could use a different source of revenue for that, I don't know what that would be, because we can't increase our levy to do that, so I don't know where that money would come from, but you could certainly do that. And what's, and what's happened in many communities is, you know, at one time, they may have, they may have budgeted a couple of million dollars to resurface their roads annually, but with levy limits, they've started cutting that back, that appropriation back, and have started substituting it with, with the issuance of debt, because, because the issuance of debt is outside of levy limits, and they're using that money that they used to use for roads, for police and fire and other, other services. Now, I think that Eau Claire is very fortunate in that we have sufficient fund balance, that we can use that to pay, to pay for those, for those capital projects, and because of prudent financial management on the, on the part of department heads, we're able to continually replenish our fund balance, and we're not drawing, so we're not drawing it down. But you could absolutely include money in the budget from a funding source other than fund balance to pay for those capital projects.
If I could add to that, I think from a management perspective, we're talking about our departments coming in a couple of percentage points under budget.
3%,
If you look at it in terms of a percentage, and that's something that I think you would want, is, you want your departments to be coming under budget. And as Jay pointed out, there's a lot of stuff in that CIP that I think you could very reasonably say, we shouldn't be borrowing for, it should be an operating expense. And so if we could, you know, and you had the levy capacity, rather than borrowing, you would say, you know, these things belong over here. Much of our information services budget is, is being borrowed for, and probably would be better, you know, in an operating budget. Likewise, if you know you're going to spend this, you know, a certain amount of money on your current roads every year, that looks an awful lot like an operating expense, so why not treat it as an operating expense? We don't have that luxury, and as Jay said, you know, if we had it, you know, it went away a long time ago. And if you had that capacity, and certainly, one of the policy decisions is, if you do have capacity, should some of that capacity be used to pull some of that stuff off? So you're not borrowing. I mean, you look at all those, all those trends, where the, we're borrowing for more things now than we were five, 10 years ago. And to the extent that we have capacity, any capacity ever in a levy, you know, it's a very legitimate discussion to say, well, should we be shifting some of that back rather than what we have been, you know, shifting over to borrowing? But those will be policy discussions that, you know, will come through certainly in our recommendations and in how you either choose to accept or modify those recommendations.
Comment about this wheel tax terminology, is that like an actual term or is that more a slang term for vehicle registration fee?
It's more of a slang, more of a slang term, yeah.
Basically, I'm kind of wondering if it'd be better for us to use the official terminology?
Yeah, well, actually, well, in, in wheel tax, sometimes when people hear wheel tax, they think it's a tax on every wheel.
Yeah, so it's also this lean.
I think that's a good idea.
Can I call it the goal of the safe roads and saving tax?
Works for me.
Politician, you know.
So maybe we could call it the goal of the safe roads and saving tax.
Yeah, see, the, the statute calls it an annual regist, annual registration fee is what's referred to in the statute.
You could call it a local registration fee, a local vehicle registration fee.
So, shifting our attention now a little bit more specifically to the 2019 through 2023 CIP. Want to talk a little bit about the CIP process, want to talk about the council's strategic goals and objectives, talk about some other considerations in developing a CIP, want to talk about the preliminary impact of the 2019 CIP projects, talk about compliance with our financial policies, and then see if there's any direction other than, any different direction from the city council other than how we're proposing to proceed at this point. So, back on March 6th, we held our CIP kickoff meeting. March 6th through the 27th, departments prepared their CIP requests. Month of April, the city manager and I reviewed those requests. We also met with division and departments about their requests. May 22nd, we had first council work session, and here we are today. Actually, we were planning to present the CIP to council, but that's, we did end up having a second work session, sorry, I didn't modify that slide. So, some of these, some of these dates may be, may be off at this point, I apologize for that, but we're hoping to get the, get the CIP prepared for you all as soon as possible. Then we'll have, we've got two work sessions scheduled, with a third, I believe, as if needed, on the CIP. The CIP gets reviewed by the Plan Commission, it gets reviewed by the Transit Commission, gets reviewed by Waterways and Parks, and then ultimately, we have a public discussion on the CIP before the, before the city council, and then we ask the city council to take action on the CIP. What then ends up happening is, the CIP is a, is a five-year plan, so it's covering the period of 2019 through 2023. What we then do is, is the 2019 projects, we basically roll those into the operating budget. They become part of the operating budget that you then actually adopt and appropriate funds for in November. So, we separated the two, the two budgets and the two processes about three years ago, because, very frankly, I think the CIP was getting, wasn't getting maybe as much attention as it deserved. It's a very important document, very important projects, because more focus was being paid to the operating budget when they were done at the same time. But now we've separated them, so we do this earlier in the year, and then, as I said, that those 2019 projects get, just roll forward into the, into the budget that you adopt in the fall.
I think if I could just add to that, though, the action on the 14th is, we look at that as direction going forward. So, to the extent that staff might give us an earlier window to start planning, we plan projects for the next year starting early in the fall, and so to the extent that when this is adopted on the 14th, that means our engineering department actually start putting plans together and doing things that would, you know, then, you know, come focus. You look at all those street projects you review in January, well, all that work starts in the fall, and we're able to start that work when we know that this is the direction we want to go on the CIP in August.
Yeah, so we expect that there won't be any changes in the CIP between August and when you adopt the budget in November. I mean, when we adopt it in, in August, that's, that's it.
We move forward work again at that.
Can I give just a quick historical background on that? This is a relatively new practice, maybe within the last two years, three years.
About three years, yeah.
And it was because of a, I think- And it was because of, I think, some frustration about, anyway, it fixes a problem. This, this fixes a frustration and it's a good thing.
That was a whole bracket. Dave couldn't get, he couldn't get a lot of the parts and equipment.
Right, right. You have to order a lot of stuff ahead. For those bigger projects, you have to order stuff early.
Yeah, and the other thing it does is Dale said, it allows us to bid those, especially those road construction projects, it allows us to bid them during the winter so we get more favorable bid prices. What was happening is we were bidding those projects in, in March and April and contractors already had their work lined up for the year. They didn't need any more work, so we're, we get high bids. Whereas if we're bidding in January, we're some of the first bids in the door and they're more aggressive in their, in their pricing because they want to get work lined up at that point. They don't have enough, they don't have it lined up for the year yet. So several different reasons we, we, we did it and it was a good practice. So the council, city council helped, retrieved earlier this year and, and came up with a series of strategic goals and objectives. And these strategic goals and objectives are what Dale and I use and we ask also the, the division and department heads to use in preparing their requests as a, as a lens to look at, look at the requests and to, I guess, evaluate and choose between competing requests. And so we'll talk a little bit more about how that, how that kind of works. But the strategic goals and objectives are to foster diverse creative economic development, provide safe and functional infrastructure that is environmentally sensitive and sustainable, optimize the city's organizational potential, develop and nurture safe, healthy and connected neighborhoods, emphasizing revitalization and redevelopment, facilitate an engaged community. This includes residents being engaged with local government and includes opportunities for residents to engage with each other, and create engaging opportunities for fun. How can Eau Claire be a city that is livable and lovable? And nurture community-wide opportunities for personal learning, growth and development. So those are the strategic, strategic goals and objectives that were developed by staff and the city council and then ultimately approved by the city council. So how do we use these? These strategic objectives give staff guidance in preparing their CIP requests. So we, we know what the priorities are of the city council, so that gives staff some ideas of where they should target their requests. It provides a lens to look through in choosing between projects competing for limited resources. Resources are always limited. We almost always have more projects than we have dollars. And so that provides us a way to, to evaluate different projects. I mean, if a project isn't meeting any of those strategic priorities of the city council, then perhaps that's a project that we, that should receive a lower priority for funding as opposed to one that is meeting one or multiple requests, or one or multiple of the strategic objectives. And then we also want to report to the city council how a recommended CIP is meeting the strategic goals of the city council. So again, how are we, you know, how, which projects or, or which goals are being met by the different projects within the, within the CIP? So at this point in time, as I said, we, as Dale said, we haven't not gone through, we haven't prepared a recommended CIP at this point. We've got the requests from division and department heads. But this graph is just taking a look at all of the projects that we've received or that have been requested and where they fall into the different strategic objectives. So 56.7% of the projects in some way promote the diverse creative economic development priority. About 95% of them relate to safe and, safe and functional infrastructure that is environmentally sensitive and sustainable. About 18% are optimizing the city's organizational potential. About 40% deal with safe, healthy and connected neighborhoods, emphasizing revitalization and redevelopment. About 6% are facilitating an engaged community. About 30% are providing engaging opportunities for fun, a city that's livable and lovable. And about 0.6% deal with personal learning, growth and development. That would be Pamela back then. So if I look at, look at it a little bit different way and look at how many projects, or the number of projects and how many of the strategic objectives are being, are being met. Oops. We've got one project that's, that's meeting, again, I'm sorry, I don't have the legend, legend on here, but I can, I can send this back out. But this, this chart is showing that we've got, we've got one project that's meeting zero, we've got 28 projects that are meeting one of the strategic objectives, we've got 46 that are meeting two, we've got 63 that are meeting three, 18 that are meeting four, and we've got one project that's meeting five of the strategic objectives. So, you know, one project may meet multiple strategic objectives in one way or, in one way or another.
Oh, just a quick question. Can you explain a little bit about how size those, these strategic objectives must be for that man?
Yeah, it really has to do with largely with staff, staff growth and development. You know, we're, we're facing a situation where, like many employers, where the baby boomers are retiring and we're losing, we're losing people almost as fast as we can hire them. And it really has to do with, with growing the organization, growing our potential, education, training.
So remember, these strategic objectives are not just for the CIP but also for the operating budget. So you'll see that that actually will have more, that particular one has more relevance on the operating budget than it does for capital purchases.
So some other, other considerations?
So Dale, one of the examples of that would be, a capital purchase could be a software system that allows for self-service, right? So employees can be more efficient, be able to get their data, get their information, sign up for benefits, things like that. So that would be an example of perhaps optimizing the efficiency of the staff, you know, under CIP.
Couple other considerations as we go through the CIP. One thing is, for, for the incumbent council members, something we've talked about the last couple of years is, is new things versus maintenance. One of the, I guess, one of the criticisms that cities receive sometimes is that you always want to build new things. You don't want to take care of what you have. You want the shiny new stuff. So this is one thing that we've, that we've talked about and I've provided information to council on and what the, what the percentage of projects are that are going to maintain something that we already have versus building something, something new. Generally, 80 to 95% of our dollars are going to maintain what we already have. Really, a very small percentage of our dollars are going to build new things. And the other issue, and I guess we talked about it a little bit earlier, is, is, is funding. Pay as you go versus pay as you use. That, you know, using cash to pay for something versus borrowing to pay for something. And what's the right mix? What's the right mix of those two going into a, going into a CIP? So right now, within the CIP, about 71% of our projects, again, these are requested projects, are going to maintain or replace some existing asset. About 28% of the projects are going for something new and shiny and 1% is for, for both. So it has some element actually of each within it. And then if we look at project cost by, the cost versus the number of projects, about 81% of the costs are going to maintain or replace existing assets. 12% for, for new and about 7% have elements of both new and, and maintenance. So just a, again, a high level snapshot of what's been submitted so far, would use, this is for 2019 projects only, would use about $5.3 million in fund balance. Normally, the last couple of years, we've been using about $2.5 to $3 million of fund balance. These proposed projects would use about $5.3 million. Would require approximately $15 million in new borrowing in 2019. And these are just for general fund projects. They're not for, for the library projects either. It would increase debt service by about, I needed to point that out, sorry. Well, actually, I think we took some of that out, but anyway. Requires about $15 million in new borrowing in 2019. It would increase our debt service by about $920,000 or about 11.5% in 2020. There's always a one-year delay between when we issue the money and when we start having to pay debt service on it. So when we issue debt in 2019, we don't start paying debt service on it until 20, until 2020. So that's why there's a difference in those two years. It would cost the owner of a $150,000 house about 30 bucks per year? Additional, on top of what we're already paying. And on top of-
On top of levy limit.
Right, on top of any other increases in the operating budget. So, so, you know, whatever, whatever, and sometimes this is one of the, one of the problems with separating the CIP and the operating budget is that sometimes we get to the operating budget and city council has forgotten what they already approved in the CIP discussion. And then there's a little bit of sticker shock when we get to the operating budget. But so, you know, as, when we get to the end of the CIP process, the projects that you approve, and again, I'll tell you what this number is when we, when you actually adopt the CIP, but that number just ends up getting carried forward into the, you know, into the operating budget. So if you approve a CIP, it's got a $30 per year increase, you're going to start the operating budget with a $30 per year increase in, in property taxes to be, and then, you know, anything on the levy side potentially increases, you know, increases that.
I would want to just remind that this is based upon the requests that have been received. So this is not necessarily what will be recommended, but so this is based on the requests that were received and they have not been, been oversifted yet. So, but that is, like, you know, this gives you that perspective of, everything, right, that's been requested comes through. This is the kind of impact you could be looking at.
And then in the out years, in 2020 through 2023, the increase is, is between 30 and 50% of this amount. So the increases in the out years are a little bit lower, but oftentimes, oftentimes that's the case and those numbers will get, get refined in future years as well. So if we look at, again, what's been requested and how that would impact our fund ba, or our financial policies, if we look at unassigned fund balance. So remember, we want between 15 and 20% of subsequent years expenditures in our unassigned fund balance. So what would end up happening is we're, we're, we're actually, the last year, we have a complete year for, is 2017. So this is the bar. We're well above, well above our, our target. 2018, based upon my projections, will probably drop down a little bit, but not substantially. So 2000, 2019 will drop down a little bit more based upon, again, my projections of where, where we'll end up at year end 2018. Then if we used $5.3 million in fund balance to fund that, this is where we'd be. 2020, we dropped down a little bit more. And then 2021 through 2023, we pretty much stabilize at about 24% of the subsequent years expenditures. So this CIP, even, even with the, the dollar amounts that have been requested at this point, our unassigned fund balance would continue to be above the goal that we've established within our, our fund balance policy. So in, on that measure, we would still be in, in, in good shape. If we take a look at the levy for debt service, which again, based upon our financial policies, shall not exceed 25% of the total property tax levy. The green line here is, is 25% of our total property tax levy. And again, it's, that's, you know, projected out through, through 2024. The blue line here is our historical debt service that's been supported by the tax levy. So you can see that amount increasing. But you can also see is this gap, this difference between the goal and the actual is shrinking. The red line here is what are, is proposed in, at this time, in the 2019 through 2023 CIP for debt service. So you can see that it continues that trend, but from 2021 through 2024, really, that gap has remained pretty much constant. In fact, there's even just a little tiny dip here at the end. Right, Dale?
Yep. Which is different than the way the graph looked last year.
It is different than the, and, again, the incumbent council members, you know, we were, we were running parallel, but we were riding up against it. So, I mean, actually, even, even with what we're proposing here in terms of, again, in terms of this, this measure and this financial policy, you know, we're getting closer to that maximum certainly. But, you know, but we, we do have, do we do have a margin, have a margin there. So we would continue to be in compliance with, with this particular financial policy. So a couple of the things that I guess we're looking for direction on and, and is that, is maintaining a fund balance at approximately 23% of general fund expenditures over the five years of the CIP acceptable. So again, I showed, you know, showed where those, on that bar chart, where, where we would be. We're still well in compliance of our fund balance policy. Is that, is that an acceptable level? Second question that to ponder is, you know, is increasing debt service for the owner of a $150,000 home acceptable at, at $30 for 2019 and $10 to $15 each year thereafter? And as I note here at the bottom, there's a, there will be a request for a possible library expansion within this CIP and that is not included in these numbers. Want to make sure. It is not included in these numbers. And that, that will also have an impact on, on the owners of, of property within the city of Eau Claire.
Do you know what the levy limit's going to increase the taxes, right? Because we always, we always-
Well, in, in theory, the increase in the levy limit shouldn't have an increase in the property tax, in, in the property tax levy or the property tax rate for the owner, owners of property because it's net new construction is what we get to increase. Basically, they cancel each other out on the tax rate. But we, what ends up happening is it also increases the, the levy for the tax incremental districts. And that's where we usually end up seeing, seeing that bump is in that, is in that, that tip levy. But, but no, at this point, at this point, I have, I have no idea what that, what that number's going to end up being for net new construction.
What part of debt, I mean, we always, this is the only place we see this increase of property, property owner. Don't we see the operating side of the bill?
Well, this gets rolled into debt service on the operating side. So that's where you then start to see it is in the operating budget in our debt service, in our debt service number. So for 2019, our debt service has to increase to, to, or 2000, yeah, to pay for this debt that we're going to issue. And then that gets rolled into the, that gets rolled into the, into the levy as well. So I guess those are, those are really the two questions at this point that, you know, that we're looking for, we're looking for feedback on from the city council. So this is, this is the time where it starts getting a little bit, a little bit serious. And as Dale said, this, this kind of forms the box for us or the walls in a room where, 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 you know, then we can bring you back a CIP that's within that box. So if you say, no, Jay, 30 bucks, that is out of the question. You know, maybe we're comfortable with $20. Then Dale and I can go back to the CIP and we say, I can, we can calculate, okay, based upon that, this is how much money I can borrow. This is how, you know, and, and then we can go through projects and make recommendations based upon that guideline. You know, there are going to be some projects that are going to fall by the wayside because we simply can't afford, we can't afford to do it. Same thing, same thing on the, on the fund balance side. You know, if you say, no, Jay, we really want to keep this higher than that 23%, we're not comfortable going down that low. Then again, that gives us that box so we can go back and say, okay. going down that low," then again, that gives us that box, so we can go back and say, "Okay, well, now we have to make some choices between these projects, okay?"
So this, this number is for, is if we were to cover all the projects that are requested?
Yes.
And, and how should we be considering the library renovations and all of this?
Um, I don't, now, off the top of my head, I don't recall what that number, I don't recall what that number was and what the impact, I, I did have it in here, I think it was about, it was, it was, I think it was about twenty, I think it was about twenty dollars per year for, for the amount, it was fifteen to twenty dollars per year for the amount that the library is going to want to borrow. That is not for, that would not hit 2019, that would hit, I believe, twenty, I believe 2020, it was one that, is one that would hit. But, but it is on top of, it is on top of this number.
Are we gonna be considering that, was about separate from the CIP, like the 2026 CIP, or is that gonna be moved in too?
It will be included in the CIP that will be coming to you, but it's an, it's an out-year project, it's a twenty, it was 2020 project, so it'll, it'll, you'll actually get another kick at the can, kick at the can, if you will, the net, the, the following year before money's actually appropriated.
We wouldn't actually be levying it?
Yeah.
But it would be anticipated, and people will be making commitments and drawing out plans and...
Yeah, they're, they're gonna start doing design, they're gonna have, I mean, for a 2020 project, they're gonna be starting to do design work in 2019.
Okay.
So, I mean, our expectation is that when you're saying yes to that, that, you know, people will move forward with the idea that when 2020 comes, you know, that council will be adopting, that they'll allow you to implement that debt borrowing mechanism.
Okay.
So the thirty dollar per house, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand, is it the new, new house that we built, or the current?
Current. Current. Every, every house valued at a hundred fifty, hundred fifty thousand dollars should be paying thirty dollars more in property taxes.
What, what's the big jump in CIP spending this year? I sort of thought after we finished up the previous project, we might slow down a little bit on that, is there, is there some major project that we're looking to fund, or just a bunch of small stuff?
It's, it's, it's a lot of stuff. The other thing that's happening is we don't have much debt service coming off, so...
In some years when that comes off, you put down, it looks more...
Yeah, and if you got two million dollars in, in debt service coming off, you can add two million without increasing anything, you know, we don't have much coming off. So it's all going right back on.
So, these requests that I would make, my purpose, we don't, like, you have that list of requests, are, and we're, we're being asked to basically decide whether we're gonna be able to fulfill those half the thirty dollar a year level for 2019?
Well, we're...
Because we don't exactly know what those are.
Right.
Right, so, right, so the, the question here is, is, you know, if, if we, if we honored every, and again, there might still be self-selection that happens, and if, you know, we might come back with ones a little less than this anyway. This is just, everything that's been requested today, without having gone through and said, you know, "We think this should be moved out, it would not happen at all." So this is more of the upper limit of at least what's been requested, and so, it's, it's not a given that that will automatically be what comes through, but we are looking for, you know, your sense of, you know, where, where your limits are, and we recognize you haven't seen them yet, you know, because we still, we still have to go through our, you know, sifting, you know, in the process as well. Keep in mind that this, actually, this meeting is a relatively new step in the process. You know, the, the statutory requirements are that, you know, a manager brings forth a recommendation, and then you present it, and the, and the council can, you know, modify it as, as, as you will, or want to. In, in response to wanting to have some input, you know, earlier in the process, this was relatively, you know, a relatively new step to say, "Okay, you know, help us give that policy guidance before we do our work on it, so that we try to bring back something that is aligned with what your higher-level policy, you know, objectives, tolerance and appetite for, in this case, in this case, you know, debt will be."
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, it doesn't, it, it doesn't do us any good to, to bring you a, a CIP that's got a thirty dollar increase in, in, in the tax, in, in taxes for owner of that, of that home, if you have no appetite to do that. And, and, because then, you say, "Well, then reduce, reduce it, we'd rather get that guidance at this point, say, you know, here's our appetite, and then we can bring you, we can bring you recommendations based upon, based upon that." And, you know, and we can, you know, when we bring you those recommendations, you know, we can bring you the projects that didn't make the cut. And if you want to add, if you want to add some back in, because, hey, you know, we, we really like this one, and you're willing to pay more for it, hey, you can do that. But we want to bring you something that's, that's consistent, again, with your, with your, with your, with your appetite, if you will, rather than something that's, that's, that's going out of bounds. So that's part of the reason for having this discussion, is, again, we refer to it as, you know, a box or the walls, and then, you know, we'll, we'll place the furniture in it and give you a recommendation based upon, again, all those strategic priorities that we talked about before, which ones, you know, we think best align with those or are most critical, and, and that'll form the, the basis of the manager's recommended CIP.
So if the group one, they hadn't come back with a budget that didn't have any tax increase for one of a hundred and fifty thousand, then we could say that?
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, absolutely. If that's, if that's, and, you know, we can tell you now, that will mean, essentially all the new stuff will go away, you know, anything new will go away, and then we'll be, again, that's a different maintenance, and we have to prioritize which things we thought had the highest maintenance needs.
So that, that's not sure, right?
What's that?
So that's, that's kind of the only option right now. Was there, oh, is there any other options?
Based, based upon, well, based upon the requests that we've seen, and, you know, there's, you know, I, having worked with, with staff for a long time, I can tell you that there's still a, a lot of things that they'd like to have or feel that we need that aren't even in the requests. And so, you know, when we say this is a request, this isn't a, I guess I don't want to be disparaging in other, other forms of, of government or levels of government, but I mean, this is what they really feel they need to, to move the community forward. This isn't a big ask with the idea that it's gonna be, you know, cut back this...
I can tell you that there's, I don't think there's anything in there that we looked at and said, "Well, that's just totally ridiculous." That, that'd happen.
Otherwise, it wouldn't even...
It wouldn't even be, you wouldn't even made it to this point, but, so, so, but to answer your question, I mean, thirty dollars is everything that's been requested. If you're not comfortable with that, if you say, "No, heck, twenty dollars, that's, that's my comfort level." This, this is the time to let us, let us know that, so that we can bring you something that's consistent with that. This is the same, kind of the same discussion that we had last fall at Budget Time, is the importance of these pre-meetings is to give us that direction, and then we can bring you a budget that's consistent with that, as opposed to us doing all the work to bring you a budget and then saying, "Oh, wait a second, I really wanted a zero percent increase," and we go, yeah.
Absolutely. Jeremy? Say, for example, we, we said thirty dollars is, is appropriate, but, and you also said that we could, you know, we could change it, in terms of what? So say, it still ends up with being thirty dollars, but it's a few different priorities in there than what, maybe what came from the departments.
Meaning, meaning you would add something in to take something off?
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty hard.
Yeah, you can, you can, I mean, you have complete ability to change the CIP.
And I guess I'm kind of, I'm kind of open to the thirty dollars, with it being somewhat likely that there'll be some changes, I guess, in terms of ideas and, and, um, that's how, how exactly, I don't know, yes, definitely not, not have necessarily all approved, is kind of the way I'm, you know, and I haven't seen it, it's hard to agree with, to say that we're gonna approve all the things, even if we, even if we say thirty dollars is appropriate. Can I draw a few?
I was gonna say, fine, just move forward, let's roll home.
Uh, so I'll, I'll just put in here three things. The first is, I just appreciate it, this is hard, this is always hard, it's never easy, and it's like the year one process that builds up, was started on a special Tuesday in November, and then you blink your eyes and it started all, and so it's a grind, and I thank you. So the analogy about, like, you have thirty dollars to spend on the menu, for me, that's difficult to say how much, like, if I were to go to a restaurant, like, well, like, I have a menu that's blank, and then they ask me how much do I want to spend, I kind of like, you know, like, what are my actions, maybe I want some tapas, maybe I want just, maybe I was here for a dessert and a drink, maybe I'm here for a whole thing. And so it's difficult for me to make an informed decision about what is it that, what parameters do I have. So that makes that I do understand that there's that legislative authority to make some budgetary changes. The two items that I have specifically reached out to staff about that I just want to be blatantly clear that I would really like to see in this CIP are, one, bike park units, like the one we had in our street. I think those have been a success, and with the developments that we have going on in our community, I think having bike park units infused in our community would be a good idea.
You're talking white caravans?
Yeah.
White caravans, yeah.
Yep, so I haven't had a number in mind, but we still have bikes being locked up to street signs and trees, and it's a really efficient use of, of our street to get a bunch more bikes for our urban spot.
I would suggest that we...
Excuse me?
We'll suggest you have our, you know, it's a business of, so...
Well...
Some, some.
Yeah.
Or I can vote for it.
Yeah. So, yeah, some of the businesses want us to learn, so, just one in particular, I'm just thinking on you, for anybody watching at home. I'm loving, I'm thinking on you. The second is this idea of participatory budgeting. So, last year, it seems that when I asked, "Can we use CIP dollars on planning?", I thought the answer was, "You can use CIP dollars on planning, but it has to do with CIP related expenses." So my question would be, and, and I shared a little bit in the email to you, is, could there be a percentage dollar amount indicated for participatory budgeting that would be allocated, I guess, in 2019, and then during 2019, that money would be used to bring citizens together, and then it would be spent in 2020 for the CIP items that the community has, quote, on. Look at the chart that you gave, that you shared, that's, it's very helpful to have a visualization, looks like out of the entire proposal so far, is that only six percent of the proposals which facilitate engagement. And I think that's a really important value here that we have in our community. It's more than, our participatory budgeting is more than figuring out where to put money. It's about building global citizenship skills of bringing people, all ages to come in and have a, have a voice with their community, encourages more healthy community dialogue. Here to report, we've barely had any people come to our budget. Last year, it was citizen Gregor, my mother and my grandmother, and a lovely gentleman from Chippewa Falls, or Chippewa County, and that's it. And with all respect, I think that we have not done the best that we could to engage that, our, our fellow community members. So I would make that an ask, that there's, and maybe just open up to council members to see if there is any, just, even if it was something small, but just a first volume, let's try this participatory budgeting, and let's have it tied to CIP, so it's not impacting the daily operations of the city.
I had a, I had a question that sort of touched on the question I had about how we can have a participatory budgeting, or if we even we can have some citizen engagement in deciding the projects that have been proposed by staff, how, engaging the, the public and how those final cuts are made. And even better, like a, like a full-on participatory budgeting process, that's something I would strongly be interested in seeing, how we can get work.
Yeah, we did that, didn't we, as part of, with, with Russ, didn't we do an electronic thing out there where they put it off, where people go down, and they had different things in departments and how they were spending the money? Most of them, most of them ended up cutting the police department, I think it's...
It's different than participatory budgeting, and it was really looking at the budget as a whole, versus like participatory budgeting. Let's say there's a pot of money identified for a hundred thousand dollars, that's kind of on the low end, but let's just say a hundred thousand dollars. People then could bet out that they want twelve new basketball boots, fifty new planters, do they want to plant some more fruit trees, you know, in food deserts in the community? I mean, they would figure out, prioritize what would be those items, and not, and not delegate to the operational side of things.
This is something that I'm, almost every single year brought up as an idea that I think is really good, it's, it's, it's helping community members kind of identify what the projects are they would like to see, and it's involving them in the process of what's important. And it's not a huge sum of money, but it's enough that we see in communities that have done this, and, in fact, with former city manager Huggins and a number of us, we went to Los Angeles to learn specifically about this process, working in one of the wards in New York. And what, what it is, is community members come together and they decide on projects, and then they vote on things that they would like to see. It's an issue that, that transcends often partisan divides, because most people like that idea of engaging in, in, sort of where their, where their, where public dollars are spent. It also gives more awareness to citizens to understand what budgeting is all about.
And how take money is.
Yeah, exactly, and that too. And so, it, it sort of has a, a number of impacts, I think, positive in our community. And, you know, the only difference really is that a certain percentage of it is really, you know, not, this discussion is just here, but a certain percentage of it would be with citizens deciding directly how they might want to spend dollars. So I think it's a, of, I think it's a huge reminder, I would be supportive. I also think there's maybe a tie-in to neighborhood associations, and I've always thought that if there's some way to couple those two things, and if you have an active neighborhood association, that maybe then, in that case, you get a certain part of money to, to work with as a neighbor, and then, then you could see a whole bunch of neighborhoods spring up. Maybe, maybe take that community matching fund that we have right now and roll it into, into, you know, an idea like this. So I would definitely support.
I can, so, I, there was a question about something, and just before the budget came up, on something else, I was looking at, I think, to deal out positive things, successes about it, so, it didn't seem intriguing. And just with, when we talk about, you know, how would people think about the thirty dollars more on their hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, I would think they would have, if they're more involved in where their money is going, they'd be more likely to be okay with it, I think. I mean, just by buying, if they knew that, because it is their money, it's, you know, it's their taxpayer money, we're spending their money, if they had some control over that, even if it's perceived control, or, I hope it's real control, but I think, or when we talk about wheel tax or whatever, they would have, if they knew they got decision-making process, they would be more likely to, that's kind of human nature.
Yeah, I, I'm also in favor of doing, I mean, more range of people engaged in the CIP. I remember when this process changed, and as a citizen, like, I got to, I noticed the CIP well before, or I personally noticed it existed, and like, I think that's a, a step in the right direction, and there are more steps in that, so we can go, that we can take to, to help people get more involved. I've actually gotten requests and met the students of the university that want to create a competition for, for ideas, particularly surrounding this hundred percent renewable energy goal that we've set. Like, what are the best sustainability ideas that will reduce energy use or move us faster to renewable energy? So, I mean, it's possible we could do it as a thematic thing, maybe choose a few themes, and that might be able to get even more interest, or, or it might not want to stretch it at all the themes, but it's a, there's a lot of different options I feel that we have, and I think the fact that people are contacting me about it is, gives me... And I think the fact that people are contacting me about it is, gives me confidence that we'll have people that will participate.
I like the neighborhood associations and, you know, there's more energy up in the north side, there's any more one and helping that along. And people have ideas, they want money spent on, they're in trees away so they can do a delts fund and they want money on, you know, what else is there, you know?
Ficklebuck.
Yeah, ficklebuck or, I mean, it's not huge things, but they're frustrated that you just want the brush cleaned away. And I get it, you know, if they, but if they had, again, had more say in something for.
I, I, these are all very, um, very wonderful ideas, but I, I have to say that we're making twenty-seven percent for people who we had in nineteen eighty. I mean, it was the reality of, of, you know, of trying to do the, uh, and I'm really not trying to throw it like, uh, this, just, just the reality of, of, of making all that happen, it takes staff time. I mean, all, I mean, when you talk about the, the participatory issue, you don't just buy a piece of software and throw it out there, I mean, there's a lot of staff time that goes into developing those ideas or hosting those community meetings or, you know, doing the things or, you know. We would love to turn our brush.
Oh, I, I know that, I know that, I think it's precise.
If you look at Owen Park, we are chipping away at Owen Park, you get a little more visibility every year I put autograph in Park. And we're actually very intentional, we got a little bit of time, but, um.
Well, it's, so along the lines of spending CIP dollars for facilitation, which that would be my goal, was to get it out of having the staff having to do all the groundwork for that, that you pay somebody to come in and do that, who's an expert in participatory budgeting. I guess in the same vein, can you use these funds to hire somebody? Can you use CIP dollars to hire somebody who then could be internal and could help execute this so that they are an inherited person in the city and also have that background?
So, I, I think we need to separate two things in this discussion. We need to separate the CIP and as a, as a, a budget from funding sources. In my opinion, participatory budgeting does not belong in the CIP. And I think the reason that we're talking about putting it in the CIP is because we don't have levy capacity otherwise to fund it. Now, the city, the, the, the way we would fund it in the CIP is to use fund balance. And the city council can choose to use fund balance basically for anything you wanna do. Now, we have a fund balance policy that says we don't use fund balance for ongoing expenditures or to fund the operating budget. That doesn't mean you can't do it, okay? So, regardless of which budget document you put that in, if, if you want, if the council chose to fund it by using, by using fund balance, you could do that. But I don't think it's, I don't think that it is a capital project that belongs in the CIP in my, in, in, in my opinion. And, and, you know, it really, to me, belongs in the, you know, it belongs in the operating, it belongs in the operating budget. There isn't, yeah, maybe somewhere down the road, there's gonna be maybe some sort of tangible asset associated, associated with it. But I think it really does, and, and, and again, if you all chose to fund it with op, with, with, with fund balance, you can choose to do that.
So, so if, if the funding for participatory budgeting, let's just say facility, came out from, from the operating side of the budget, could we then use the projects identified come from?
It's a capital project.
Yeah, yeah, and so to set that criteria, that this is not about like how much money do we wanna spend on salaries and wages? This is not about those types of decisions, this is really about clearing the brush, perhaps the basketball booths, the, you know, flower containers, uh, maybe, I don't know, the bowling grounds.
Or playgrounds.
Well, you know, and, 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 you know, some of those decisions on, you know, and, and, you know, maybe it's all part of the development of the, of, you know, what we're gonna fund with those dollars and what we're not gonna fund with those dollars and what criteria. But, um, you know, clearing a brush is an operational expense. It's not a CIP, it's not a capital, it's not a capital expense. Playing around with it, is it capital, is it capital, is it a capital expense?
I understand that, I think, I think what I did is, help us, help me, at least I can speak for other people, help me figure out a way to do that versus this.
I think I just, I thought I just did, I said you can use oper, you can use fund balance dollars to, to, you know, to, to pay, to pay for that, just, you can put the money in the operating budget and use fund balance to pay for it.
Does that why I did a policy?
Yes.
So that's the problem is that, then that's the narrative is that we're violating our own laws. So that's a challenge.
Right, you can change your policy though too, if you want, if you want to.
Right.
Well, I, I see that every year we have a big challenge with CIP, I mean, last year, this is, it's gonna be more this year. But I think I do support the thirty dollars, I mean, thirty dollars, that's enough or something, CIP, I don't know. I actually, I think we, I know we support that, uh, I, I know the library committee member and I know we had discussed about a whole bunch of stuff and, and it's a major construction, major project, and if you're down. And I hope in a way I can help supporting, to meet the needs for, you know, helping everybody, that's, that's a lot of money that we, uh.
But just to be clear, the library project could be money, probably another twenty or so dollars on top of this thirty dollars. This is not, this does not include lottery project. And if I put on the.
So, yeah, I'm sorry. So how are we gonna go about, to meet the need of that, that libraries and the project up there? What can be funded that we are, can move forward and that we have?
So when we do our presentation, there's, this was all the general fund. So, um, we talked about the library project. There are also projects in the water utility and sewer utility, um, which, you know, will have potential impacts on rates, you know, that water and sewer, you know, okay? So, this, this is just the general fund. There are still, you know, other funds like the library that will have requests, you know, coming in. Other thoughts on the three? I, I, I don't wanna stop the, the, I guess I just wanna be very clear that we understand the importance of participatory and getting people engaged. And it's, it's a conversation we've had year after year, um, and it's one we struggle with. We've tried, you know, one year we tried, you know, going out and having, you know, separate neighborhood meetings, you know, and with the budget, we had, you know, we had encouraged people to come out and talk about it and be in it, you know? And we spent a lot of energy on that and, you know, you have these, these community meetings and, you know, one or two people, you know, show up. And so, and we, we tried, it was a very small dabble, you know, with E two C two, you know, and it was not true participatory budgeting.
That is a process that you're seeing.
Exactly.
And that's, that's a challenge is that we haven't had a true process.
We, we have tried different things and we've not.
I think that, just to put it out there, I think that, um, like throughout the decades of trying different things, the councils changed too. And so, I, I think I've said this to you before too, but I, I am very interested in helping to facilitate, helping staff to facilitate that and using the skills that we have. And, and as elected officials, it's like literally our job to reach the public. And so, um, and, and so I think that, I mean, I can speak for everybody, but I think that, um, you know, at least, I, I'll speak for myself, I, I, um, would be interested in helping to alleviate some of that.
Yeah.
I have a key number no going back in there.
Number no, I like that. It's less like the observatory, you know, when you get dorked and there's other things.
If you could tell me what diagram, what has been our typical increase for your?
Um, it's been.
Is there a diagram in here?
No, 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 there, no, there's not, there's not. Um, in the last, uh, since I, I, since I've been here, it's probably, uh, been in that twenty to twenty-five dollar range.
So thirty's not really a problem?
No, it's higher, it's higher, it's higher than average.
And, and, you know, I, I mean, I would never say that just because we did something, you know, last year, we should do it again. We should do it again next year, you know, more, we're asking, you know, where's, we do have a lot of new council members. Where's your comfort, where's your comfort level, you know? Cause you're, ultimately, you're gonna be the, the ones answering to your constituents.
And you showed that that debt service is gonna, you know, could you, um, let's throw that library thing in there? Could you give us something over the next ten years, what this might be like?
Well, I can only go out five years because that's what, cause after, after the CIP ends, then it starts going down because we're not.
Could you do that?
Cause then we're not borrowing anymore.
And masses out there?
Yeah, I can add, I can add the library into this, but this, this goes out through two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, so this goes, this goes out, um, you know, out the next six years.
When we look at that particular diagram, that's talking this thirty plus the twenty, so it's really?
This doesn't have a library, right, right, but this is just general fund. So what you see after this is it starts going down.
Right.
Because we're not adding new projects, but we're paying off, we're paying off debt. Of course, we know we'll be adding new projects because every year we're.
I guess the only thing I was looking at is wondering what, what would be the blood pressure of somebody that, that was all in for this thirty, but then was shot by the twenty? I mean, I, I think.
The additional twenty?
Yeah, 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 so I'm just trying to figure out if we, if we just sit down, it's all really good stuff, the twenty for the library is really good stuff. Where, where is that gonna put us?
Well, I mean, in, in terms, I mean, in terms of where it's gonna put us vis a vis related to our policies, we're treating, we're treating the library and the general fund separate, separately in terms of our, in terms of our policies.
I know that, but when I do my test, like it would be six and two.
Yeah, exactly, and it'll, I mean, it'll be basically fifty dollars. But it'll be thirty dollars about two thousand and nineteen, and it'll be about thirty dollars in, in two thousand and twenty, okay? Cause two thousand and twenty will have a, looks like about ten dollars or so of, of general fund back and change. And it's another twenty dollars of, of, of library on top of that.
But then, okay, so I feel a little stupid now, but, but then, um, this is just saying that that thirty dollars is gonna be stable. Are we gonna be thirty and then forty-five and then fifty-five and then we'll continue to look about fifteen each year?
No, well, right now in the CIP, it goes up about thirty dollars for two thousand and nineteen. And then it goes up about ten to fifteen dollars each year after that, okay? So it goes up thirty, then it goes maybe ten, fifteen, ten, fifteen. But the library isn't in those ten, ten and fifteen. So it's, it'd be about thirty for two thousand and nineteen and then. And then maybe about thirty.
I'm just gonna finish my, so then that ten fifteen actually goes back to our typical increases.
Yeah.
Yeah, now, keep in mind that that's staff's looking, you know, at years two, three, four and five. There are things that are gonna happen that they didn't, you know, so, you know, although that's showing right now that that's ten fifteen dollars, you can have things that break the expectation.
I like to, you know, please try to make constituents, uh, and then my last comment about this conversation is, after my election of the council, it was really my thought that it was my responsibility to be in contact with my constituents. And I, I'm sure just like everyone else here, I'm, I'm really willing to, um, contribute to the work that the staff does. I mean, you've got your, you've already got to keep the operational roof. But anything that I can do, where I still that I have that I can contribute to citizen engagement, I, that's, that I see as my job. So I'm, I'm.
What about using, um, council dollars? I mean, we have, we have, we typically have, um, these thirty thousand dollars as return if not more. What about, and I'm sure we'll have that this year, what about using those funds to put out for RFP?
Well, you have the, you have the, the funds that have had historically been budgeted for the, uh, for the training academy, for the citizens academy that are still, you know, it's twenty, it was.
Some of that's going to be whispers.
For, for thi, for this, for this year it is, um, for this year it is. So presumably it wouldn't be in, in, in next, next year. But that money rather than, we were, I mean, I was planning to remove that from the budget because we don't have a citizens academy. But, but if you all wanted to use that for another purpose, it doesn't increase the levy, it just.
Keeps it neutral and then it puts it on us that if, if that's where the funding source comes from and says, okay, we're willing to go without something for the council budget in exchange to invest in our citizens, I think that's a good idea. And then if that were to get passed, then the question is, I guess, setting those parameters on, okay, well then what are people going to be participating in and what are they budgeting? And I am not interested in having, um, uh, it be about operations and really making these things on the CIP side of things. So that you have that predictive stability of, of, of that versus, um, popularity contest. With all due respect, um, that, you know, we can give it to basketball booths and, you know, flowering containers or more meaningful things than that.
Well, I feel people thirty.
I agree too.
Yep.
I see, I see that it's reasonable.
Books are asking for more all the time, that's what I hear. And, um, you would just assume that they're willing to pay a little bit more.
Okay, we're fifty-two.
As, as we come right up to nine o'clock, we really appreciate it.
Let's just stay at all men.
Well, we got sandwiches.
Yeah.
We just need some caffeine.
Yeah, I'm looking at my couple of shots, taking a break, I'm trying to relax. Oh, it's easy to jerk without, so, I have a session.